We're doing this as a hybrid meeting. Would you like to?
Sure. All right. I'll call the roll. In the room, Mr. Davidson?
Davidson, present.
I am here. Mr. Hassenger?
I'm here.
And I'm drawing a mental blank and I'm getting annoyed at myself on that. Our associate member, Ms. Presleyhan?
I'm here.
Thank you. And on Zoom, we have our vice chair, Mr. Robbins?
I'm here.
And we're expecting our other member, Prabhu Venkateshraman, but I do not see him right now. And staff president is Fiona Coughlin, our town planner?
Here.
And Natalia Howard, the office manager?
Present.
Okay.
Present.
Thank you.
And we'll find out about when people try to talk to us, whether they can hear us and so on. All right. First item, as usual, is public input. If anybody, either here or on Zoom, has something they want to talk about that's not on our agenda and is in our purview, this is when they get a chance. Is there anybody? I don't see anybody. So we'll move on to action items after I mention, if you haven't seen on the agenda, the hearing on the special permit and site plan for approval for 20 Indian path dish wireless. We already have a request to continue the hearing. So we won't be taking any testimony tonight, probably. That comes at 7:30. All right. First item, request to withdraw without prejudice from Farnhamsville Acres MRSP 2023-12/PP, 61 Maple Avenue.
I'm just gonna share my screen. All right, can everyone see the PDF?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. So I'll just do a really brief overview for the board. I think most folks are aware. We had a hearing that was in process for quite some time for 61 Maple Ave, also known as Farnhamsville Acres. The applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice. This is the second request for withdrawal in my tenure as planner. We did invite the applicant, Mr. Stephen David, to speak to this this evening. I believe he should be on. I'm not sure if he is one of the attendees, the phone number that's called in or not. I would ask if Mr. David is present as an attendee to notify us if possible, or if he's on the line and I just can't see him.
Yeah, if he's seen as an attendee, doing the raise hand feature would be an option for that.
Apparently not.
Well, in the meantime, if Mr. David is trying to connect, I'm happy to answer any questions from members of the board to the best of my ability, and we can go from there.
I think we can act on it.
Yeah. At least for me, I, given the in and out of this project, I would love to know why they are choosing to withdraw and why they would feel that without prejudice is worthwhile. I do, I do know that the language on prejudice and not prejudice is something that helps protect, both us and the applicant in general from having to repeatedly file and repeatedly have the same process in front of us without having made changes, without making anything significant about that. So at least understanding why they are looking to do without prejudice would be useful.
Yeah, without prejudice means I think that they can avoid the wait two years.
Yeah, they could file again next week if they wanted to.
Right.
Right. Without changing.
Apparently, we don't know why. Actually, the wording in the letter, I thought was, he said, "I'm withdrawing my application without prejudice." He's asking to withdraw.
Yes.
Without prejudice. I don't know whether he'd want to withdraw if it was with prejudice.
Yeah, oh, no, I do see Mr. Robbins' hand up, but I will also say that I did contact staff to express at least my concern that the applicant understands this is a request to withdraw without prejudice and not a and he's just not able to just outright say he's withdrawing without prejudice. That's something that we have to determine as a board.
Dave?
Okay, I raised my hand not because of the current discussion so much as Prabhu called me to let me know, and I'll pass this on to you, that he's been trying to join the meeting, but he's been having technical issues.
Okay. Well, he'll hopefully he'll get here for the decision that we have to do.
He's logging on now.
Oh, yeah, he's logging on now.
Oh, great. Wonderful. Okay.
Okay. So.
So, yeah, it does look like Mr. David, if he is present, we're unable to see or yeah, it's maybe another, maybe he wasn't able to make it, but he did. I didn't, I didn't receive a lot of information. All I, I just told revise his letter to make sure that it's a request to me to withdraw without prejudice, as Mr. Wood mentioned. And I just asked him to confirm if he could attend to explain what she what she said he would be able to do, but I think at this point, we would probably just need to move forward with what we have. I mean, this project has been going on, as I mentioned, since I started here, but I think even before that, you know, this area is long been a target for subdivision. I think the original proposal was a significantly larger number, I'm sorry, greater number of lots. And then that was revised during this most current process to significantly reduce the lot count. And I think that, to my, my understanding is that they were still working on some logistics with some partners and figuring that out. So there was a legitimate reason, you know, from the planning department's perspective to withdraw, but you know, we would just obviously want them to be, should the board decide to grant the request that they would be fully prepared next time they are ready to file, to hit the ground running.
Well, they're gonna have to start, gonna have to do the whole thing if and when they come back. Yeah. Well. Oh. Prabhu? Are you here and can you hear and can we hear you?
I can hear you guys. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Good.
My laptop is still starting up, but I joined on my phone. But I can hear you guys.
Okay. Good, that'll help. So, what do you want to do?
Is there a, I don't know, like a protocol or a precedent? I mean, I think, I mean, my opinion is just that, like, if, if it were like a one-time deal, I think it would be more likely to kind of be okay with withdrawing without prejudice, I think. You know, obviously, there's so many times, only so many times that it can keep being withdrawn without prejudice before.
Well, pretty unusual, more than once. His letter says, "Withdraw with prejudice." So if we were to say anything except with prejudice, it wouldn't be consistent with his, with what we have in writing from him. I'm kind of inclined to decline the request so that he's still on and he needs to deal with this. If, if he, we won't have had a request to withdraw with prejudice to act on. I think he'd need to come back to us and talk to us about it.
Yeah, I, I think I'll agree. So I'll make a motion that we do not grant the application to withdraw without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Is there discussion?
So just to confirm, so this will give them, this will keep the window open for him to make the request?
Yeah, nothing will have changed.
Until we hear more info.
They can come and explain their reason or accept with prejudice.
Got it.
And submit, you know, withdrawal, just a withdrawal. Anybody else? Dave, Prabhu? Roll call.
All right. Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Venkateshraman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger?
Aye. Motion carries not withdrawn. Our request for determination of minor modification to the 244 Worcester Street T-Mobile Adam Wolfrey Centerline Communications applicant. They're asking for changes in their wireless cellphone setup, and that's at Wyman Gordon, isn't it? 244, oh, no, 244, yeah, 244 Worcester Street.
Yeah, it's the back of Wyman Gordon's lot.
Right, it's actually, it's actually up on some of the highest of the buildings. Is there anyone from T-Mobile?
I'm here. It's Adam Wolfrey.
Yes.
Okay, I'll briefly just discuss the proposed work. So my name is Adam Wolfrey. I work for Centerline Communications LLC, and I'm an authorized agent for T-Mobile. So T-Mobile has an existing wireless telecommunications site at 244 Grafton Street, and the proposed work involves removing nine antennas and then installing nine new antennas, removing three RRUs, removing three TMAs, installing six new RRUs, installing two new hybrid cables, removing two cabinets, and then also removing all the unused cables and equipment on site, and finally, installing two new equipment cabinets on the site. So the proposed work stays within the guidelines of the 649 regulations. We're not increasing. So in each sector of the antennas in position two, the height is increasing by two feet. And per the 649 regulations, you're allowed to increase the height of the antennas by 10%, and this is two feet. The existing height is 118 feet. So this is significantly below that 10%. We're also not changing the footprint of the cell site. So in the cover letter that I sent, I just, I requested a minor modification for this proposed work. As I mentioned before, we're not changing the height, and this is, this is pretty much an equipment swap. And the purpose of the work is T-Mobile recently merged with Sprint, and as a result, they have way more customers in close vicinity to that, this location. And as a result, they need to upgrade their equipment so they can handle the increase in their customers in this area.
Okay.
So my only question that I have is, does this monopole, or does, I'm sorry, does this pole at all have a have prior coverage by both T-Mobile and Sprint, or is it, was it only T-Mobile on the, on the pole before now?
It's just T-Mobile now.
Were you asking about?
Before the merge, yes, because it was, it was Sprint equipment and it was T-Mobile equipment around the area. I just was wondering if on this existing pole, was it both, was it both companies from the initially, or was it only just one?
Unfortunately, I would need T-Mobile's database to answer that. And I would also need Sprint's database to get that information.
Yeah, I don't think it's critical to my vote tonight. It's just the curiosity.
It's been a long time since I looked at it, but I only remember one set of antennas. Okay. This is a public meeting, not a hearing, but if there's anyone who wants to say anything, board member or otherwise, let me know.
Will this change the technology component? So will it be, what's the existing, like, is it going from 4G to 5G? Is it staying consistent?
So this does have 5G capability.
You're saying the change does, or it already has it?
The change does.
All right, so it.
Yeah, it'll be going from four to five.
All right.
Anybody else? Chat to.
All right.
From?
That was from Mia. Go ahead, Fiona.
I don't know who's driving that shirt. All right.
I do see Fiona's hand.
Oh, Fiona.
Yeah, just wanted to add, for the board's reference that, you know, upon staff review, we checked the consistency, you know, with, of this application with, with federal law and prior practice. And, you know, just wanted to highlight in my, in my memo that this is consistent with a request for determination of minor modification to a, to special permit 2009-10. This would be the third modification of that special permit. And, yeah, you know, I just wanted to reiterate from a staff perspective that we didn't see any, any red flags or inconsistencies with a request for an eligible facilities request. So that, that's all I had to add.
Anybody else? Anything else? If not?
So I move that we grant the minor modification as presented?
Second.
Moved in second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
All right. Mr. Davidson?
Davidson, aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Robbins?
Mr. Robbins votes aye.
All right. Prabhu Venkateshraman? I do see you as an attendee, not as a panelist right now, so maybe there's something. Go ahead, Natalia.
Prabhu, are you there?
I just promoted him to panelist, so maybe give him a second to. Okay, he should be all set.
Prabhu, we're taking a vote?
Yes, aye. No on camera, aye.
Thank you. And Mr. Hassenger?
Aye. Motion carries. Someone said 244 Worcester Street, Grafton Street. Worcester Street, of course. But that's okay. Fine. Motion carries unanimously. 2C, field change, drainage pipe substitution, Broad Meadow North.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to explain this. There's nobody else here on behalf of this request. So this is just simply a substitution for piping that's going to be used at 188 Providence Road, also known as Broad Meadow North, which recently was approved by the board. The property owner has asked to substitute the pipe material for the project to use an ADSN-12 HPDE pipe instead of the originally proposed RCP pipe. I double-checked with Graves Engineering that this would constitute a field change or if it would be something that needed to be elevated as a request for determination of minor modification or modification. And based on his professional engineering opinion, he agreed that this would be a field change. So we're proceeding in that manner. Happy to answer any additional questions that the board may have. There was an attachment that was uploaded to the meeting materials that I am going to pull up just so we can see the specs if the board is interested. So let me do that really quickly. Can everyone see that?
Yes, but it's a little small on the screen.
Okay. Sorry, yeah, I'll zoom in. Just scroll.
Actually, I can't tell whether that's any better or worse.
Oh, no. Okay. Let me see if I can open it.
If, if Jeff says it's okay, it's okay for me. And as a field change, we need to say okay?
Yeah, I, I believe procedurally, it's, yeah, the board just wants, just needs to have, make sure that they're aware of requests for field changes and just give their consensus if it's something that they have concerns about. Should let them know, and then I'll relay that, but I think technically it would be an approval.
You want to vote?
Sure, yeah, though, just to be thorough.
Okay. I move that the board approve this field change.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Davidson?
Davidson, aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Venkateshraman?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Recommendation to Select Board, Town Acquisition of Land at 87 Milford Road.
Worse.
Tell us about it.
I will just do another brief overview. So just to refresh everyone's memory, at the last meeting, we discussed submitting a letter of support for the acquisition of land located at 87 Milford Road, which is on the border of Upton. And the Conservation Commission had submitted a letter that also, to the Select Board, recommending acquiring this property as well. So we're just making, you know, we, after analyzing amongst ourselves at the last meeting, I drafted the, this letter, which was uploaded to the meeting materials. Just a standard letter, you know, that basically reiterates our support of the joint acquisition in coordination with the town of Upton for various reasons, including, but not limited to, the environmental benefits, the connections to open space that are possible through this acquisition, alignment with our open space and recreation plan, and in just aligning with the goals of, of the Department of the Conservation Commission. You know, we always want to support these types of efforts when they come along, and I think it's a great opportunity for both, both towns, and the board shared that. So if the board has any requests for edits or wants to add anything additional, let me know. I'm seeing now, for some reason, that the font is different sizes, so I will fix that. Sorry about that.
I'm, I'm, that was a little unclear whether the usual notice of withdrawal had been filed with either Upton or us. That's usually what the Select Board acts on.
So Fiona can correct me if I'm wrong, but when I talked about this at CPC briefly this past, you know, this past month, the member that was also on the Conservation Commission, Sandy Brock, did mention that this was not a 61A parcel. So there was no, there was no notice of withdrawal to be had.
Okay.
So, my understanding is this is not a first refusal situation.
Yeah, okay, so that, that explains that. So that's why we don't have any dollar figures either. Well, I think we all agreed last time that we wanted to do this. Do you want us to vote yes to the letter?
I do have one question, which might just be me nitpicking wording in the letter a little bit, but it says, "The Planning Board met today and considered the notice to the town of Grafton to acquire the parcel." I, I have not seen any notice to the town of Grafton to acquire the parcel.
That's what.
I've seen the Conservation Commission's letter. I've, in their letter, they say we were contacted by Joseph Layden, which, you know, I haven't seen anything in writing or any sort of actual notice.
I can revise that language to omit that, Justin, or to specify that it's, reference the Conservation Commission's letter or reference the correspondence with Joe. I believe that I had used the similar language that the Conservation Commission had used in their letter, just to be consistent. But I do agree that that, that might be confusing. So happy to do whatever works for the board.
Yeah, I, I think referencing, if you have Joe's communication, be good to reference it. And obviously, the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, the Conservation Commission's letter says, and I'll quote, "The Conservation Commission was contacted by Joseph Layden, the Italian Minister of Upton regarding 87 Milford Road." So that would be, that would be useful language. If we had an actual, like, written notice in some form, that would be great just to briefly look at and reference, but if we don't, that's good enough.
I think, I think this is a proposal rather than a notice. So is someone gonna move that?
Quick, there's a couple of quick questions too on my end. So is there a likely, like, use of this land? Like, would we turn this into like a park or like a hiking trail? Or like, would this just be to preserve the current land?
It extends already protected, a fairly large, already protected area there and fills in some of the holes that are not in it now. There's a, I'm not sure whether you're looking at the, yeah. It's, the way the border works is kind of strange, but there's, there's a good bit more land to the left in Grafton that ties in with this. And basically, conservation explains. It's, well, it'll be up to the selectmen as to what terms they put on it, you know.
In terms of like negotiating and rates and whatnot?
They'll, they'll have to figure out
Yeah, I
what they want to do.
My expectation is that this would be a, if the Select Board wants to move on purchasing this, this would be a vote at town meeting and in the terms, whatever they write up in, in that, it would be along the lines of probably a conservation restriction at the very least on the land.
Yeah, that'll be up to them. We won't know. It's just that, I think we're saying that yes, that land is what would be good to have the town. Assuming the price is right.
Right, and, and there would be no, I guess, it would be more to protect the conservation of the area than as a.
Right, open space.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Jim, I, I can answer, I can just put my two cents in. Yeah, the like, the most feasible and kind of natural use probably would be open space preservation. use probably would be open space preservation or and we put, you know, po- potentially put a conservation restriction on the land, the land is uh it's landlocked, so from a development perspective, it's not um really buildable. Um, and obviously, as the Chair mentioned with the connections to the open space um in Upton, as well as um creating and forging stronger open space connections on the Grafton side, you know, we can expand um trails or what have you, whatever, you know, um, you know, the Trails Committee, Open Space and Recreation Committee, Select Board, us, et cetera, all, you know, kind of wanna see there, it would be like a you know, a democratic process, not not made unilaterally by any means, but um the likelihood that it would be open space is high.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not.
I move the board has this, has staff send this letter as drafted with the modification mentioned earlier along to the select board?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none.
All right. Mister Davidson.
Davidson, aye.
I vote aye, Mister Robbins.
I vote aye, it took me a while to find my mute button.
All right, Mister Van Katramen.
Aye.
And Mister Hassinger.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Now, it being seven thirty, we come to uh agenda item six, which is the special permit hearing for um twenty Indian Path. And we have a, a um public hearing continuance form from the applicant asking to continue this hearing without taking testimony until seven thirty on February twenty-sixth.
I move that we grant that continuous request.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, hearing none.
Mister Davidson.
Davidson, aye.
I vote aye, Mister Robbins.
Mister Robbins votes aye.
And Mister Van Katramen.
Aye.
Can see him now. And uh, I'll, I'll vote aye too.
Oh, yes.
Motion carries uh unanimously. Back to two E. Draft decision, special permit twenty twenty-three dash oh five slash SBA and fifty-eight Folet Street. Selco.
Yes.
Uh partnership with Verizon, Seltower. We have a draft decision, did we close the hearing?
We did close the hearing.
Yeah, okay, finally. Okay. Uh, I noticed one condition in the draft that I looked at that had been crossed out, the one about uh notice of withdrawal and and so on.
The notice of withdrawal or is it filing with the register of deeds? Was it the filing with the register of deeds?
No, uh, the, the, I'm talking mostly about the uh there's a whole uh whole paragraph about that long. About
Conditional plan.
Uh, uh, ha- ha- having to file a notice of withdrawal or change of use for that land.
Oh, yeah.
Do do what they're supposed to do uh for that.
Condition twenty-seven, sorry, um. Yes, so, um, after, you know, um, Mister Chair, if you want me to give a brief overview, um, I can um for how we got here, um. But the, after um, after studying the issue and going back and forth with this during the public hearing process, this is a little bit earlier on before we started drilling down more about twenty-one Folet Street and um those specifics, we had covered this. Um, I had, you know, checked with the assessor, um, the town assessor, um, council, et cetera, and we can't really regulate this. Um, we thought that we might be able to include a provision just to cover our basis to make sure the applicant, you know, does what they're supposed to, but we really don't have a statutory um ability to re- to regulate this in this way. Um, it will have to be resolved whether this is stated in the decision or not. Um, but I just wanted that to be clear for the board, because I know that this was obviously something that um we did talk about at length um at a, at a few meetings, and there was a lot of testimony that was submitted into the record uh about this particular issue. So um, that I just, I, you know, stru- did, did strike out, just to be clear that we can't, if, we can't really keep it in, so I am indeed offering to remove it.
Yeah, so we would be saying renumber.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now, the other one is which condition is it, oh, here it is, is it eighteen?
I can share my screen, sorry, I should have been doing that. Can you see that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so that was condition twenty-seven that we, we just discussed.
Right.
Um, and I'm sorry, where are we now?
Nineteen.
Okay. Yes. Um, so the applicant, um, you know, as you can see here, the applicant commented that this uh doesn't have any basis in the zoning bylaw and should be deleted, um, because this is basically covered in condition nineteen. Um, I want the board to make, you know, a decision on this, I mean, if in my, in my experience in Grafton, th- this is th- these conditions are pretty standard in special permit decisions that we've drafted thus far, so I mean, I I see, you know, I I get their, their point in that, you know, it might be duplicative in a sense, but if, you know, it's really the board, um, board's comfort level, and I do know that the applicant is here, if he is, if you know, if Mister Jaimo wants to chime in at any any time and ex, you know, provide any added context.
Um, they're actually different a bit. Eighteen says they've got to do the recording within thirty days. Nineteen says they have to do the recording before they start work. Um, there have been cases where permits or or this sort of thing wasn't recorded for months and months and months. Um, so I I'd prefer, I mean, I don't feel motivated to say take eighteen away. I I feel like it's okay to leave it.
Mister Jim will just have his hand up if you want. The applicant does have his hand up in the room if you want.
Oh, oh.
Michael Jaimo, uh, for the applicant and um just to to explain myself a little bit on this one, um, it's a pretty short timeframe to record something, there's other things, as you know, we're gonna have to do after this permit issues such as the um, the sixty, resolve the sixty-one A issue. I think from the standpoint of encumbering a property with a special permit before those issues are all worked out, we would prefer to be able to record the special permit once it was clear that we'd gotten through those uh situations.
I I I don't see it. Um, the special permit exists if something happens down the road and you need to come back and get it changed. Fine, you get a change and you record it. Um, you should be able to take the paper up to the, for recording the day after. They, they, you know, whatever the eleventh day, whatever the, whatever it is.
I think my only thought is, I agree with Mister Hassinger about not taking out the condition. I would be a little flexible on a fixed number of days, I think their days is too short, if there's a particular number you have in mind that would be more amenable, I'd be interested, I'd be interested to think about that, but I think I would still like to keep the condition in in general.
Yeah, I I hadn't thought about that, I guess I, um, I'm wondering what the town's interest is, that might that might drive the number of days, what you're trying to solve with that condition.
Yeah, well, as I say, I can remember months, maybe years having gone by, maybe things having proceeded without the recording ever being done. Um, and, you know, no one knew, or 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 it turned up being a problem later on, and so we started having this. It, thirty days is is the normal uh, Fiona, sounds right.
Yes, thirty days is the standard, and this really, just to answer um the applicant's question, that this is really to make sure that projects are staying on track, and as, as the Chair said, um, following through with filing, you know, there's been uh historically issues with with filing special permits um by applicants and then the permit expiring and then having to refile, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so we're really trying to make sure um that, you know, the applicant is doing their due diligence and recording things properly, and then when they're moving forward, it's done correctly, and I mean, I know that, you know, um, there's been no indication during this public hearing process, um, if this were to to pass, that that wouldn't happen, but it's, this is standard in Grafton and um what, you know, what I've been seeing since I've been town planner here, and I know that some other communities have, do do this, um. But, you know, again, I I, I don't think uh, to to Mister Wood's point, I don't think that there would be um a problem with changing the days. Um, I don't think that there would be like any like legal issues with that. Um, Natalia, who I know had her hand up earlier, might be able to provide some additional insight, because she's been here a little bit longer and has some more institutional knowledge about um this, but
The, the two years, um, two-year life of the uh permit without renewal starts right away, whether it's recorded or not.
Start, it starts when you file it with the clerk.
Hmm?
Starts when you file it with the clerk.
Yep.
Not, not even after the uh appeal period.
Yeah, it depends on where you are, but if that's your bylaw, yes.
I don't remember.
Okay.
I know about the two years, because that does come up.
Oh, sure.
Um, all right, Natalia, did you have something for us?
Well, I was just rereading um condition nineteen, and if I, the way I read it is that they have thirty days to give us a copy of it after they've uh filed it with the register of deeds, which is different from condition eighteen. Uh, do you know what I'm trying to say? I mean, when I read that, that's how I would interpret that.
Yeah, that's actually two different requirements.
Yeah.
First one says, get up to the registry within thirty days, then the other one says, you get another thirty days to bring back what you got up there, right?
Yes.
Um.
Yeah, so if, if we're looking to change the days, just to say to move this forward in my own head, is I'd be, you know, okay with, you know, ninety, I'd be hesitant but still okay with a hundred and eighty days? It looks like he's not okay with a hundred and eighty.
No.
What about a hundred and twenty days in in the middle?
What about thirty days?
Right.
Um.
It, this, this is not a a critical point, but I I do know how my client works, and I think the thirty-day timeframe is is apt to become an issue, and I would rather have it a little longer.
Become an issue.
Just logistically, that's all.
Well, a little longer, forty-five days?
Sure, whatever, whatever works.
How about forty-five days?
I'm okay with that.
All right, um, are there any other questions or observations or issues or whatever?
We, we had a note on C four and C six.
C four and C six. Oh, I didn't think they were two.
So I can um actually answer this, um, because I was able to get um feedback from the the police chief. So the, um, let me just move my, sharing too many things, hold on. So um, the police chief clarified for me, um, this uh, the stipulation that they typically ask for to be included is I'm sorry, the stipulation I asked to be included on all new slash modified wireless communication projects requires the applicant to provide space on their facility for public safety equipment at no charge, no rental, rental fees, sur- surcharges, et cetera. We do not expect the applicant to pay for the equipment or installation or any associated maintenance slash repair, which I believe was Mister Jaimo's question, so.
I think I can see. You could put a couple more words in there to clarify that it's, they're not providing the equipment, only the
Right.
Location. Can you put that in?
Yes, I can, I can do that.
Okay. Uh, and the other one, C six, is about the color.
Yes, so the galvanized steel over painting, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a preference with the board, but um it was just something to note, and this just comes up in a couple of places in the decision.
Gray. Make it gray.
Yeah, I, again, we don't, we don't, we don't mind doing either, I just didn't want to have them put up a galvanized steel pole and have you say, hey, it was supposed to be painted or painted and have you say, no, we were happy with the galvanized steel, we were just like, I I was suggesting we could get a little more direction from the board.
Painted gray?
If if that's what you want, I just, I just wanna
Yeah.
If if galvanized steel is is fine, we would prefer to do that, because that's the typical way.
Yeah, for, for me, I don't have a preference one way or the other.
Okay.
May, may I ask what the industry standard is?
For, you're asking.
To the, ask the applicant what the industry standard is.
Typically, unless somebody, you know, ordered us to paint a pole, they wouldn't paint the pole, they'd put up the galvanized steel. It would weather over time, they, you know, the thought is that that is the least visible, the most natural look. Um, we do know that places require things to be painted, white, gray, light blue, I mean, we've seen, seen it all. Um, it's really a preference of your board and, you know, it's possible to do any of those things.
If I may make just a off-the-cuff recommendation on rewarding C six, just to be clearer for the condition purposes, you know, the requirement, so the ZBL, the equipment on the tower shall be galvanized steel or if painted, a non-contrasting color gray. To word it that way, that you could choose if you wanted to, but we have it.
Or you could say the galvanized steel is gray.
That's fine, if that, you know, this is a helpful conversation anyway, because I can bring that back to them.
I, 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 I think if we leave it and just, it's gray, and you can decide how to make it gray.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
I don't want it rusty, but I guess galvanized isn't supposed to be.
It's not supposed to be, that's right.
All right.
Um, okay, is there anything else?
I, I did.
So.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't, um, apologies for speaking, I just to clarify, it's, it's, so the steel is what we're moving forward with, right?
Hmm, no, just leave it the words you've got. Non-contrasting color, gray, and they can make it gray either with paint or galvanizing.
Okay. Okay, and then.
Which is different than when I had to go out and try to pick a color for a, a tower on uh on Estabrook Road many years ago. So, looking across from um, Miriam Road.
You got midnight gray or stardust gray.
Well, what, I don't, I, I have a whole thing of colors and I couldn't pick a, because winter and summer, it's gonna be different.
Sure.
Okay, uh, so um, is there anything else?
Okay. Added note that um the exhibit fifty-four, I just need to update the date for when Mister Van Katramen submitted it. I I wanted to get this uploaded onto the um project page as soon as possible, so that's why it's not included.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
And Fiona, there was the other comment, and I I didn't see it in here, maybe it is, about the propane tanks? I didn't know.
Oh, yeah, propane or um natural gas?
Well, the, the plan showed two tanks, the narrative was one tank. I was hoping that it could be clarified to say two tanks on here. Um, it's not necessarily gonna be two tanks, it may just be one tank, but it's really, you know, it's up to the generator people, how many tanks they think they need to run the thing for the requisite number of hours till the power comes back on.
Does, does the um fire department care?
They, they might, they might, you know, they, they might tell us, we can't have two tanks, I don't know, we would have to get licenses from both of, for both of them anyway.
Well, we could cover that with a minor modification.
Okay, that's, that's fantastic.
Okay, that's, that's fantastic, good.
Yeah, the, the fire department didn't offer any comments on the site plans that would indicate a cause for concern. And so this is how I addressed that.
Oh, you did, okay, I hadn't seen it in one of the places.
Sorry, I know it's hard to see.
Oh, one or two, okay.
Yeah, and this is throughout the decision because there's a few different places where we needed to just clarify that it's maybe propane tanks plural too, based on the site plan.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. I hadn't seen it in the first paragraph, Fiona, but I might be looking at the wrong.
Yeah, it's highlighted here, well, if, if she scrolls back up.
Yeah, bear with me, sorry, one second.
Where, where you have the blue, well, never mind, no.
Well, this is the first paragraph here.
Okay, good. I, I maybe, I may have the wrong one pulled up and I apologize. Yeah, sure. I, I said I may have the wrong one pulled up on here that I'm reading, maybe that's why. I didn't have the, the latest perhaps. It was dated today, but it might not be the right one.
You, you can see.
Yeah, I can see that down there now, yes, thank you. That's great. One or two, thank you. That was my only...
Is there anything else? I don't hear anything else.
I don't. I moved that the board approved the decision with all of, with all the waivers as drafted and with the minor changes I discussed today. Fiona, go ahead.
Yeah, so Mr. Robbins is currently dealing with a, an issue right now. He's trying to get through, he just sent me a, a note. He's, he, yeah, he had to step away for a really brief moment, so I just want everyone to be aware, you know, I'm trying to get him, get him back on, so spare, bear with me.
Vamp until ready. You ever hear that term?
But while, while we're, just before we close out, so there was no other issues with, with findings from the board's perspective or anything, I know we kind of focused mainly on conditions, so I just wanted to clarify.
A hundred and five findings, thirty-three single-spaced pages.
Yes, yes. So just before we...
Something... I don't know what that was. Something just came by.
So Dave, I'm hoping to get him. Okay.
Dave just said something.
Yes, he should be, he should be, should be coming, so, sorry, give one second. But in and out, it's a lot of tech issues.
You gave a motion.
I'll, I'll repeat the motion when Dave's on, I think that's cleanest.
Yeah, it looks like he's joining now.
I am here.
Okay. So I moved that the board approved this decision with granting all waivers, making the adjustments in the draft decision as, as appropriate for if approved and so on, as well as the minor changes we've discussed tonight.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there discussion? Discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Davidson?
Davidson, aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Robbins?
Mr. Robbins votes aye.
Mr. Venkatraman?
Probably aye.
And Mr. Hasserler?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to miss you guys.
You're welcome to come anytime.
Yeah, next, next meeting.
Yeah. The tickets are really a great price.
The senior pass I had this past year really paid off.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
Stay safe in the snowstorm.
You too.
We're working on it.
Thanks, Fiona.
Thank you.
Discussion items, Spring 2024 Town Meeting zoning articles. Ten Fisherville Mills, Section ten, Fisherville Mills Smart Growth Overlay District.
Sure, let me get my, can you all see what I'm pulling up here? Is that, can you see the draft here?
Yes.
Okay, so this is pretty easy, I hope. This is just to make sure, I noticed in Section ten, Fisherville, this is an older section of the bylaw. It covers the Fisherville Mills Smart Growth Overlay District, also known as the forty R in South Grafton, all of the changes, oh geez. Okay, so there was an issue with the up, there was an issue with uploading the PDF, but basically every reference to the, to the Department of Housing and Community Development's former name is changed to their current name, which is the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And there's four sections that are impacted by this. Definition section, Section ten point two, requirements, Section ten point five point C and the administering agency section, ten point five point F, and then the design standard section. So apologies that the PDF didn't upload the way that it was supposed to, so, but that, that, those are the changes and I'm happy to pull up my other version of this. So give me one second, see if I can find, I can get the...
It's just a fine replace anyway, basically.
Yeah.
We're, we're only discussing tonight, we're not voting tonight, correct?
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah, pretty much, yes.
Okay, the, the, the final, the final articles will probably come back next time or when we're ready. I don't see any, does anybody feel a need to discuss this? Good. Number two, various places in the zoning bylaw.
So this was something that I had put in here because I had noticed, you know, in my, in my professional day-to-day in Grafton, I, this was something that was used kind of interchangeably at times with the agricultural district, but actually, Mr. Robbins, Vice Chair Robbins, suggested against doing this and I think it's actually a really good suggestion because it can be misleading. I think, you know, legally, the district name is agricultural and I think this might confuse people more than anything. It also kind of gives the illusion that the minimum like acre requirement is eighty thousand. I'm sorry, yeah, the minimum like dimensional standard is eighty thousand and it's not. So I don't, I, I'm, I'm making a recommendation to the board for me to withdraw this from being considered. I think, you know, it's, 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 it's not something that we need to, to focus on.
I agree. Does anybody not agree?
I was confused on why we needed it in the first place because I hadn't heard R eighty before now, so I agree.
I've seen it. People like to say it, in fact, it came up with the Holden Farm thing.
Yes, it, it comes up, it, it's, it's come up a few times and then me being the planner, when I, you know, had started here, I was confused and I thought, you know, well, maybe it might be helpful, more transparent if we put in the bylaw, but yeah, upon more thought, probably not a good idea.
Go ahead. So do you need a vote, since this isn't before us? Does, does any member of the board want to continue to pursue this one? I don't hear anybody saying they want to pursue this. Let's say we're not going to pursue it, okay?
Okay. Sounds good. I, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I think we should come back to the VMU. That one is going to take a lot of discussion and these other ones are, the, the VMU and the wireless should be the last ones because these others are pretty light lifts, kind of like the ones we just discussed, so maybe get through the easy ones and then talk through the...
We want to skip number three and go on to number, well, whatever. Four, Proposed Changes. Uh, yeah, Appendix three, two, three, one, Use Regulation Schedule.
Sure.
This, this just adds under...
Business uses.
In and outpatient, clinics for outpatient care for profit. I wanted to have a better definition of what that means. What, what's a hospital and what's a clinic? Because also eighteen itself, first of all, it ought to be A and B, I would think, but that's okay. Hospitals and clinics for in and outpatient care for profit. So that covers clinics for profit in eighteen. Eighteen A says clinics for profit. Which one applies, the, the one, the first one or the second one? But in any case, I, I think we ought to have definitions for, or at least definitions for what, and how to distinguish between hospitals and clinics and how big clinics could be.
Yep. The other piece I noted, just when I was trying to figure that out as well is eighteen itself is for in and outpatient care, so clinics that have inpatient care would not fall into this. The other thing that did strike me as interesting and probably something we might want to change is eighteen as it sits right now, we have special permit for RMF, but in the proposed for clinics for outpatient care only, we have a no. And I think at least the very, the very least, if we're allowing special permit for in and outpatient care right now, we should probably allow a special permit for the new proposal for that zone.
In, in the RMF?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so you, you'll want to do, do a little work on that one.
Sure, and, and I just wanted to also just clarify for the board that, you know, this was something, I think I mentioned this last time, that the planning department was, this was a request made by local property owner and developer in Grafton who was trying to basically get the board's temperature and the town's temperature and if this is a use that they, you know, that the board would be interested in seeing, it's, I agree that I think we need to do a little bit more defin, defining of what constitutes a clinic versus a hospital, because obviously hospitals are, involve a lot more coordination with emergency services. This language, so it's, it's interesting because this here is outlined under business uses, but there's also a public use area that has this exact language for nonprofits, which is a lot more, offers a lot more flexibility and options. There's a lot more special permits allowed in more districts when it's nonprofit versus the for-profit. So what's really, so just so every, you know, just so it's clear, the request is really for something like a convenient MD, I think I mentioned that last time, or a similar type of use where it would, there would not be ambulances and those types of services going to and from this facility. It's really, you know, it's, if you're looking for, you know, vaccinations or, you know, treatment of less severe illnesses or injuries, that type of thing. But, and, and I, I had requested that the, to the gentleman who proposed this to me, he, that he might want to pursue the avenue of a citizen's petition because he has an area in mind that he's looking at, which would be Bolack Plaza. And he's surrounded, you know, that's, there's a lot of residential uses around that area and I, I had asked him if he had considered pursuing the zoning change through a citizen petition and he said that he would be happy to work on collecting signatures and getting consensus. And I think that, you know, something for the board to think about is that might, that might be the better option here because we want consensus from neighbors who would potentially be living near this. But I included it as, you know, as a discussion item because the board should obviously make, you know, have their opinions heard about any types of zoning changes, so.
What we have here now, I, I'm not for. I wonder if this means that you can put whatever they are, Minute Clinic, you know, all, all of these things where people go before they have to go to the emergency room, they go for, well, all sorts of treatments. I think we have to have a better idea of what we're dealing with, at least I do.
I think you're saying it's like a, it's, it's the outpatient care type model. So if you break your arm, they're going to have an X-ray machine, but Minute Clinic isn't. And we don't have enough of those in this region, they're very scarce.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of, as I turn into where Wegmans is, north, there are like three, three, three of those. UMass has something, UMass has, I don't know what the limits are, but UMass has something at Stop and Shop Plaza. You know, I've, I've gone there and gotten a blood, blood draw.
I, I think from my seat, I look at it that, yeah, a place that's a little bit more encompassing for an outpatient care, like, you know, a typical Ready Med or, you know, one of those kind of places would be really good to have it closer to, not only closer to us, but just have an additional one in the region because typically if you go to one, at least right now, it's a thirty, forty-minute drive depending on traffic into Worcester. Then you got to wait two, three, four, five hours sometimes for, you know, basic care, being seen.
If you want to find a radiologist, you're gonna, you may have to really drive.
And, you know, even without radiology, even just ear infection feeling, as soon as he's got to wait a few hours, at least. And I think the idea that it is, you know, like you mentioned, the multiple little things in this tight area that, that sort of thing is in my mind, is likely a, you know, business, if the business could be profitable, then they could do it. If this, if they don't see a business case because someone, there's so many others nearby, then they probably wouldn't.
Yeah, but the, the, well, okay. I want to, I want to see more of that. There might be a, limited to five thousand square feet or something also. Or, you know, what, I don't know, that's not necessarily the number, but we have some other things that break it, I think five thousand. So that, that might need some work. If he wants to do it for this, if he wants to do a citizen's petition for the Spring Town Meeting, he better get busy real quick because we know how citizen's petitions need help to be viable.
And, yeah, my only comment on the citizen's petition point, at least for me, is that once they have the signatures for a particular petition with particular wording, that can't be changed without basically everyone else having a, you know, signing a new thing. So if there's even a minor change on that that we need to see, they can't do that in a citizen's petition, but we could otherwise.
Right. It might be, you know, they might be able to make it happen for the spring. It would definitely work out well or better if they were really kind of understanding that it was going to be the Fall Town Meeting, then there'd be plenty of time to work through it.
Right, and I did relay that to, to him, I, I said, you know, it's, I, I, I know that, you know, you're trying to evaluate me to him saying, and if he's trying to evaluate his options, but, you know, this, there really is a lot of implications time-wise for not moving. You know, I told him from the beginning that the best bet is obviously to try and get, get signatures because then again, we can hear from the folks who'd be living nearby, but, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of mobilization that's required for a change like this, for a town meeting and it's a lot of work getting those signatures and, you know, I sent him the information and he didn't seem to be too, you know, too worried, so I think he's actively working on that, but I think it would be helpful for, for him to be able to get an idea if this is something that the board would also support.
I think he ought to show us what he's worked, what he's proposing. What he's proposing. And maybe come talk to us.
Okay.
A little bit like we did with Holden's.
And the other side of the coin for me is that if there's potential concern about needing to see what the town in the in particular, his neighbors would. Be feeling about this. A letter that the neighbor sign. You know, even with his urging to say this is what the think we're thinking about. You know, we as their neighbors support it. That would be at least additional information that could help to.
But a single site. You know, okay, when they come in for their special permit. Under it, um that's a different thing from.
The zoning change itself.
The zoning change, cause now and forevermore. You'll be able to.
Yes.
Do that anywhere in the affected zones. So. That's our job. To be looking at that part of it. Anyway, like like somewhat like what happened with Holden's. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Alright, um definitions. This is just. Defining seasonal?
Yes. So I had looked through a few different bylaws, um particularly on the Cape, cause who knows seasonal better than the Cape um. And this seemed to be the kind of general. Comment, you know, the common denominator in most of the bylaws, and I think it provides uh guidance. That would be needed without being, you know, overly restrictive in terms of like. I've seen bylaws that. Have um. This distinction and they use months for the year, but I think that that might be a little bit challenging considering um. You know, the different different types of uses, I think keeping it more general from a from a professional standpoint makes more sense. Um and you know. With seasonal. The let, you know, everyone is pretty. Much aware that it's going to be, you know, between. May and November usually, sometimes, you know, April to October, but. As long as we, I think if the board has a more concrete standard that they can hold applicants to, especially now that we have um. A seasonal. Um new seasonal use that was uh allowed at town meeting, we we need to just make sure that we. Have parameters um. That we can, we can stick to.
In in spite of the formatting here. You're intending intending that for a. To be a. Another. Definition.
Right, we're just adding adding a definition for the word seasonal.
The topography is. Not quite on on track there and. At least on mine, it's not bold and it's not underlined and. Like the one above and the one below.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it green, so it was. Stood out a little bit more.
I have two. Kind of overarching thoughts on this being an issue as drafted is. Number one, number one in my mind is on average, what's the average? How do you define and figure out the averages over the course of, you know, ten years? And you only used it for. The full year, five of those years, that's still hundred eighty days or less. Or the other piece. In my mind is. If you use it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, how many months can you get if you're only using it those days? For that use, so. I would think something along the lines of. Use of a lot of structure for hundred, you hundred and eighty consecutive days. Per year.
Okay.
You know, or less per year and. Get rid of on average, that's.
Sure.
Okay, sounds good. Is that enough on that one? Moving on. To. What is this um? Wireless communication facilities. I mentioned to um Fiona. Uh the uh eligible facilities request. Any request for modification of an existing tower or lease. Uh base station. That involves. A, collection of new, uh B, removal. C, replacement. I just wanted to say. That qualifies. Under. Okay. Right. Anybody? Nope, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to, um if it's easier. Bob, you know, I'm happy to have you, you kind of. Take the reins on this, cause you you do know more about the wireless than I, but I I had been looking around um. You know, just based on the applications that we've seen in the boards reviewed, we're kind of continuing to run into this issue of kind of the base, basic. You know, structure for how we should proceed. So it's usually, you know, we have to kind of. Make sure that we're defining clearly in our bylaw when eligible facilities request is and therefore how we deal with it, like we just did one. This evening, right? So we're continuing to see this, um they don't come, you know, they've been coming around a lot lately. And um just so we were better prepared going forward. I looked at other bylaws from other communities, um I didn't go to um, you you know, there was some. Communities that had done, you know. Wireless overlays and had like a very uh complex and uh. In intense uh take on their wireless bylaw, but I was looking more at communities that have a. Bylaw that's structured like Grafton and that's kind of similar to Grafton because. I think that 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 would personally make make more sense um. But, you know, I, you know, I'm happy to uh look at additional bylaws that the board. If the board has found anything that they like in particular, but all I I really did was I made sure that we. Defined kind of these basic. Elements that continue to come up, you know, co-location eligible facilities request, and then in our definitions. We need to transmission equipment. That needs to be kind of clearly defined, so I added a definition there and then a definition for a base station. Um so, you know. It's very clear to an applicant, do they know what what's covered? From there, I just went through and I made, we uh I I included a submittal requirement for a review from the board that would. Mandate the provision of a um. Radio frequency report because I'm noticing that we're getting a lot of feedback from the public with with concerns about. Emissions. Um from these towers and um colocations, et cetera. And it's actually not, not a requirement, so something for the board to consider and then. Lastly, well, actually, um I I've noticed uh in section five point eight point six point eight, we often. Deal with. Applications that have. Equipment that is slightly taller. Than the um the twelve foot. Requirement, so. It's usually thirteen feet. Which I didn't think would be something too crazy to change, but so I just put that in there for consideration. Um Dave Maxson suggested removing. Dimensional standards for antennas altogether. So I know that might be a little, that might more in some discussion, but we are, as the board knows, continuing to see applications. For panels that are at least six feet tall. And I've. Spoken to applicants that have wanted to, you know, go as. As big as eight. You know, it's it's. It's just something that I think, you know. It 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 removes a step because you're not having to. Work that out, discuss it during the public hearing, request wave, you know, have waivers being requested, et cetera, just streamlines the process. And lastly. I added this section for modifications of. This is really just. Bringing it back around to. Um how the el- eligible facilities requests fall into the review of the board and how they need to align. And the board's processes need to align with the Middle Class Tax Relief and Jobs Creation Act. Um and you know, how. The reviews will happen going forward, you know, basically we say here in five. In the section five point eight, point eleven, point two. That um. The board basically allows staff to do a preliminary review of requests that are. Submitted to the department, their claim to be eligible facilities request and then take it from there, which I thought was kind of. Nice, so we can, so staff can make that determination. To put it on the agenda as a request for a minor modification, or if they think that the board needs to provide more feedback, we can proceed that way. I think it just. Got to drone on and on, but I think that this is just a good way to clearly outline what we're doing and why for an applicant. Because right now we don't have this. In there um. All that being said. I did check. And we have funds available to um. Have David Maxson do a. Uh markup of the bylaw as it's written. And provide feedback and attend a meeting to discuss the changes and he um. I said he's, he would be willing to do that. And, you know, if if we wanna just disregard. Everything that I did and just go with what he says, then that's fine too.
Okay, well, let's see what he has to say. I do. I I do want to um. Back in the definitions, I do want. If we're gonna have that. I I wanna have. That it. Has to. Be qualified. Um not just any, see it says any request for modification. That involves so on, so on, so on, so. I think it's. Any request that falls under qualifies under. Whichever law. Everybody. Does anybody not agree with? See what Dave has to say?
I agree with, see what Dave has to say out. I will just add, at least for myself, the five dot eight dot four J edition. The simpler language, that's your second paragraph in there is. What I think I prefer, but if. David Maxson prefers the first, then I'm happy to go with the first. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, um. I didn't reach a conclusion. About that. And I'm not sure. Whether. We can do that. But ask Dave. Because. There there are. It's 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 the um. The federal government that controls. Radio emissions. And um may, I've been, back in the day, we were told that we couldn't. Take that into, we couldn't deny somebody because they were gonna be admitting. Emitting. Radio waves and that sort of thing. So I think, I think we need some advice. From Dave and or. Anybody else who. Counsel maybe. Um if if we're gonna put that in. In some form.
The second paragraph just says that, you know, in compliance with applicable federal and state regulations and. You know. If we even try doing the, you know, first part, having the full, you know, details. You know, engineering evaluation and such as. I'm not sure that this board is. Gonna make any heads or tails of that technical level anyway, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just, um. You know, that was just something that I had seen other communities ask for, and I thought because there is a lot of concern. That's been voiced in public hearings that, you know. I do agree that we need to double check.
There has been. For just about every. Cell tower. Since the beginning. And now with. The newest. Uh millimeter. Whatnot, you know, there's, there's another round of issues. But that's. My understanding has always been. That that's. The uh FCC. Not us. Um and we could get in, we could even get into trouble or or. You know, if we ever tried to use. Use something under that. Or make a decision under that. FCC is supposed to know more about radio waves than we do.
Supposedly.
That's fair.
I said, well, I, uh no, I said they're supposed to be.
Okay, well, I'll make sure, I'll I'll work with Dave.
Okay.
Yep, I'll work with Dave and try and get something for the next meeting.
Okay. Alright, uh I think we did that. And we did. Okay, we have. The the.
Fun one.
Proposed uh. Yeah, VMU districts have got three different.
So what I have pulled up on the screen right now was my um. My initial stab at. Um some modifications. So a- and then Dave, who has been um kind of compiling a list of. Excuse me, issues that he's been having over the years with the, you know, or um, you know, wishless items for changes to the VMU district. He submitted um a memo and the VMU use table um. Attachment, which basically outlines the discrepancies between the permitting processes for each VMU district, so. As the board, you know, is aware, there's, there's four in town. Um VMU South Grafton, VMU Worcester Street, VMU um Transit Village and VMU Gateway. And each has its own separate definition in the bylaw, I think, you know, to. My understanding is that when this was passed, it was to kind of cultivate. An image and a vision for each area and look at each area kind of individually, because obviously South Grafton has a lot of. Historic significance, um the Gateway District is slightly different, also has historic significance in a different way. Et cetera, et cetera, Transit Village is kind of a more modern. Uh zoning choice, uh that, you know, along um Institute Road and then Worcester Street is a lot more geared, you know, more geared toward. Commercial uses and the um, again, more modern um type of. Situation, so. Um I I think. I think the best way to probably do this is I'm gonna run through very quickly what I. I mean, I uploaded everything, so the board, you know, was able to kind of see everything I proposed. I'll run through what I proposed quickly if we have any questions on that and then we can talk. To Dave's. Attachments and Dave, you know, Dave will be able to explain some of his, some of his thoughts um in more detail. But um. The. Changes, you know, some of it, some of them are pretty minor, but the focus is really on the um. Uh sections twelve point ten and down in this bylaw, because as we've seen through the recent. Uh application process that was before us, it's up in Main Street. It's not. Easy. Not that it should be, but it's, it's challenging. For different types of uses to be able to kind of fit neatly into this, into these standards every time, right? If you're allowing a a wide variety. Of uses, a lot of them tailored toward kind of more um residential mixed use and having these kind of public. Uh space, you know, activated public spaces. Along the sidewalks, et cetera. If you're proposing, you know, a manufacturing use, that's not supposed to be tailored to the public because they're doing. You know. Complex manufacturing work that could potentially be, you know, unsafe for somebody to just kind of hang out. In the front, you know, that obviously doesn't apply, so. I just, I I I just clarified new and redeveloped buildings um should be orientated. To the, to the frontline, to the front setback line, which. I think that that was just an oversight, so I. From when this was originally drafted, so there's nothing kind of crazy there, but I did want to bring up. These kind of, these kind of elements, like the more complicated um. Design criteria that we're holding everybody to, you know, for the most part. I don't think that we should be granting, you know, waivers for every single thing, but there is some, some aspects of the zoning that I think we should consider, so. Twelve point ten point four was one of those sections. You know, for commercial mixed use building requiring a minimum of sixty percent of the building facade to be oriented toward the street. With clear windows, um you know, those, that's gets really granular. And it should, I think, you know, would be. Interesting to, for the board to review this on a case by case basis, depending on the use type. So that was, that was my um thought process there, and then I'll just go quickly through the rest. Same thing for lighting, the lighting standards are very specific um. Which is. Nice and. You know, um I think great, but I think you can also achieve. The vision. Without. Um, you know. Uh so some of this. Level of detail. So the lighting was.
So, you know, just real, real quick if I may, um. One thing I saw that was a consistent thing in. These additions is the. Wording on who can vote on the waiver. Struck me as. Interestingly complex in terms of the, of how it's worded and.
Well, Da- Dave has a mention of that, doesn't he? Um that we can't. Have the. I think he says. That we can't have. The associate. Involved in that vote. Involved in that vote, um.
Yeah, that was also what I was thinking about, but the other part in my mind is. Five members or, you know, you know, four members voting yes or three, depending on. You know, like who's eligible, what deep, what defines eligible in this case, because. Of course, you know, you have to be here for all the meetings or mulling in, but then what if you're absent on the voting day, but you're still eligible, but you're absent on the voting day? You know, how does that work out? Like, it'd be just cleaner to me to say we need four votes, four yes votes or. Or whatever.
Yeah, there are other, there's at least one other place where the board, uh, I think it does. Say basically special, special permit standard for waiving. Um. Stuff and and yeah, keep it, keep it simple, um.
Now I have a question too, are we gonna, we're gonna review that document, right?
It's it's so. I don't know, especially with the use table, my head hurts. Are you sure we're gonna get to this for the spring? Anyway, uh, I did, uh, uh, I had the impression that Dave wanted to have a few words to say on this. Is that true, David? Maybe not.
Oh, there he is. Uh, yeah. Where are we at here? I've been momentarily distracted here.
What?
So Dave, where I just pulling up the, I have your memo pulled up and then the use table that you provided.
Maybe we should do this when we're all in the room.
It would probably be easier for us to do it when we're all in the room. I mean, I can, I can talk kind of briefly uh on. Couple topics, I guess, one, the use table, yeah, that's something we, yeah, we, we're not gonna be very productive in trying to go through that. Tonight, uh, my main concern is that. That we look at the. The different VMUs zones and what is allowed or not allowed in each of them, and there. There's a, there's a fair amount of uniformity, but there are a number of places where. It's the 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 use table is different for the different VMUs zones, uh. Without there necessarily being a. Uh. A reason that's evident from the differences. Uh, and as Fiona noted earlier, there, the 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 four zones are not identical and they, you know, they do have different characteristics. And we want to be cognizant of that, uh, but where and and it it. It also differences also partly arise from. The different times at which the zones were created and the. Consultants or staff involved in making the proposals, so VMU South Grafton was back in twenty twelve. Uh, VMU uh Worcester Street and Transit Village were in uh twenty seventeen and. VMU Gateways in twenty twenty, so different people were involved in writing the use table for that, so it's probably a good. A good exercise for us to review those. And and. Where we don't see a reason for an inconsistency, we probably may want to make it more uniform. But as I said, that's, you know, there's dozens and dozens of entries of lines in the use table that. Uh, and since we we've all, except for me, when I put this together a couple of days ago, but you've all just seen it for the first time today and I. I don't think we can have a productive discussion about that in any detail. Night.
Okay.
And some of the other things, go ahead.
Sorry, Dave, so I just wanna, just so everybody, I just wanna confirm that everybody on the board is clear, like what we're talking about, so, for example. You know, you you see here. Like, look, date, you know, childcare home, like every single, almost every single one has a different designation. It's site plan review in South Grafton, it's prohibited in via in um on in the Worcester Street and Transit Village districts. But it's by special permit in the Gateway District, those are. Three different classifications for the same type of use, so that is what Dave. And, you know, the board and myself are trying to analyze and streamline and kind of make, you know. Re- re- review, I think, you know, as Dave mentioned, over time, different districts being approved. Different thought processes at different times, but now I think it's time for us to look through these and and say, okay, well, why? Why is a community and neighborhood center permitted in village mixed use? Uh, uh, South Grafton, but only by site plan review everywhere else? Just, just so everyone's clear, that's what, that's. That will, that will probably have to be a like workshop of the board, like a special meeting, it takes some time.
Yes, let's, let's plan on that, um.
Okay. So we should probably tailor, think fall.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, that that I would definitely agree with, I I I don't see us. Being able to do something really. To to the degree I'd like to see it done, I don't see us accomplishing that from any town meeting, I think if there's anything we wanted. You know, wanna focus on, it would be the wireless and and even that may or may or may not. You know, be doable for me, and I very much wanna rely on David Maxson. For advice on the wireless.
I I think we can.
But on the VMU, yeah, I mean, I think this is. It's, it's good to get started thinking about what we wanna do with VMU, you know, we've had the zoning run out for uh almost twelve years and. Uh, we've had, I think, and we've gained enough experience in working with it to be able to look at. What the bylaw says and and identify things that need to be clarified or improved or revised. Uh, as far as tonight's discussion is concerned, you know, you you've all saw saw my memo for the first time today, so uh. It's probably, probably all would would like some time to digest it and think about it. Uh, if there is anything in particular uh about that memo that you would like to. Talk to right, you know, tonight, for if for no other reasons, to try to clarify what I was attempting to say there, um, I'd be happy to discuss, but uh. I think by and large, it's, you know, it's something that we'll all want to take some time to read and think about before we really get into the meat of it.
Yeah, I think.
I have a question for him, I just was, I wanted to clarify my role because. On number three, it mentions twelve point nine point two, which is covering landscaping. And so I didn't know how that really applies, cause I went through and read the whole thing, and I don't know, did anyone say that an associate member was going to vote on site plan approval? Cause it was my understanding that it's special permit only, so I just, just to clarify that for me would be great, since I need to know what my role is.
Well, uh, is that what we were just touching on before that um Fiona had. Complex language that included the associate, but Dave points out that we're not allowed to have the associate. Um, do that. Um.
Yeah, so, right, so the the point about twelve point nine point two and similar concepts is that. Twelve point nine point two does not spell out. What permit applications are be the board is voting on, so one can kind of infer kind of by necessity that. If it's a special permit, the uh the associate votes on it or is eligible to vote. Uh, under the right conditions, if it's a site plan approval, on the other hand, the associate can't vote, uh. And the the language, the language of twelve point nine point two does not. Spell out whether it's applicable to a special permit, a site plan approval or both. And so and, and as I pointed out in one of the, one of, one aspect of my memo is that. Some. Some applications for basically, you know, the the by right uses in the village makes use. Don't even come to the planning board, so the planning board is not able to approve a deviation. Uh, if it's a site plan approval, the planning board could approve it, uh, just by a vote of the board members, and if it's a special permit. The board can approve it with the associate being eligible to vote. But in most places in the zoning bylaw, you know, there's, there's no question about what you, what you're dealing with. Uh, in in this case here, you're dealing with three different permitting regimes and the 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 language in section twelve generally does not. Uh. Make a distinction, and so it's sort of, at best, the language is ambiguous. Uh, we kind of can can understand how it should work, but the the language could probably be clarified.
So stick with one point three point three point four, cause that's clear in that language right there. I mean, it's in the front of the document at one point, it's for all site.
Yeah.
It's, it's spelled out there, the whole thing, so that just needs to. Go throughout the document.
Yeah.
The thing, the thing about one point three point three point four is that the Attorney General would would not approve that language today. Because the Attorney General has determined that. He's an associate member is eligible to vote only on a special permit, you know, whereas our zoning bylaw. Asserts the ability to the associate to vote on a site plan approval, but the Attorney General in recent years has been rejecting that language. When towns have tried to include it in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, and but usually. With special permit, with a lot of the special permits, it's a special permit and site plan review and. We take one vote. Um, you know, there's one decision that covers both and that's partly.
Yeah.
That's partly under um. The those language that says when it's a special permit, um, then we fold in site plan review. Uh, aspects to the special permit and. I think that's where that gets uh dealt with, in any case, uh, I'm not sure, I don't have the language right up here right now. Uh, that was proposed, but this, the associate would only be voting if they were gonna vote. On. The permit. Um. In in other words, uh, you you don't get six people who can vote. Um, on on any of it, so this needs, this needs more thought. And. Do do we, do we need uh?
No, that made sense to me, I get it now.
Do do we need anymore on this tonight? I didn't think so, um. My head hurts, bills.
I move that we approve our bills and pay them.
Second.
Moved in second at discussion hearing on roll call.
Mister Davidson.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mister Robbins.
Mister Robbins votes aye.
Mister Vega Truman.
Aye.
And Mister Hassenger.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, staff report.
Yes, so, um, I will keep it brief, so basically, I'm sorry, my um. My folder is down here, give me one second to grab it with my notes. So, uh, one thing that I did wanna bring up for the board is that I have been asked, I don't know how in depth we talked about this last time, but um. I've been asked by the police chief, fire chief. GMA um agent, yeah, uh, to look at the um. Uh, pathway behind North Grafton Elementary and. Uh, the evacuation routes and the possibility of revisiting that feasibility analysis that was done, um. Uh, I I don't know how familiar um everybody is, but the uh. Um, the Grafton Upton Railroad, um. Is by there and the propane tanks are stored nearby and there's concern over evacuation, we we did. Try and address this at the um, the beginning of twenty twenty three, we closed out the feasibility study. Um, it was at that point outdated and needed to be revisited, we tried to go after a couple of grants to update that. Um, we also asked for CPC funding, we had no luck, and we're trying to now evaluate cheaper off, cheaper and better options. Um, so staff are trying to put their heads together and handle that, so I'm working on that. Wait, what, we're gonna start with a site visit, um, and uh, once the weather gets better, probably in late March and go from there. Um, and put our heads together on how we can try and figure out a solution um to this. So, um, in addition, I think I will be working with DPW to go after a complete streets grant. Um, for some work in our um tier two prioritization plan, Milbury Street. Um, I still have to touch base with uh Paul Canoyer about this, but he did, you know, I I brought this to his attention. He said he was interested, would help administer the grant, so um. Once we uh finalize what exactly we're going after, um, I will let you know. Um, but there's a couple, you know, the complete streets grant has two windows of opportunity to apply throughout the year. Um, it's competitive, but we're hoping that now that we have our. Plan in place, we'll be able to move forward, um, there's. Uh, so we had a uh site walk at the Fisherville Mel Dam site. Um, for those who don't, who don't know or um need a refresher, we did get a grant from the. Uh, Massachusetts um Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. For permitting and design work uh to repair that dam. It needs some work and we did the site visit with the secret, with EEA Secretary, um, Grafton News was there. The town administrator was there, myself, I'm the property owner, and it was really a very cool thing, um, so. Keep your eyes out for a piece in the Grafton News and maybe on the EEA website about. The project, um, the RFP is out on the street, we've gotten some inquiries and um I'm working with the TA's office to. Um, coordinate those next steps and hopefully we can move forward with somebody soon, um. Uh, we are going to be pretty busy going forward, so I just um want the board to be aware of that. We have a few big projects in the pipeline that should be coming, um. One in particular is the Five Millennium Project, which was the um. Subzone B uh zoning that was passed at uh Fall Town Meeting. Which we just got confirmation today, actually, from the AG's office that they approved that. Um, literally right before um the end of the day, so that's exciting, um, but that's coming. Pretty quickly, and that will be a big project, and then we have a few others that are coming later on in May. Um, that we can talk about closer, closer to that date, um, but I just want the board to be aware that time, staff time will be. Um. To focus on that and, um, if there's any projects or things that need to be prioritized, just please. Um, try and give me a heads up so that I can plan accordingly, cause sometimes, you know, the day to day work with the application and decision writing and et cetera. And can take over a ma- majority of the time, and it's just Natalia and I, so we're um. So, to just give me a heads up, if there's anything in particular um that you'd like me to look at, uh. And other than that, um, it's been the standard, um, you know, master plan working group is going well. We're getting feedback from uh the members for the Housing and Economic Development. Um, sections, goals, objectives and action items, um, we're continuing to do um. Construction monitoring, where when we can, when and where we can, um. I've been meeting with the Affordable Housing Trust um a lot about the seventeen and twenty seven Upton Street project, they have. Started their um. You know, doing their due diligence, um, I'm starting to feel questions about the traffic study, et cetera, so um, that is one of the projects that I was talking about is coming up. And the board should just kind of prepare to do that in the spring, um. There is a lot going on, but I don't want to comment there all of the time, so if the board has any other questions about anything specific, any grants. Um, projects or what have you, I'm happy to answer that, those questions.
Uh, tha- that evacuation path you mentioned, is that, is that the one? Back a few years ago, when we were approving the subdivision and and uh. Whatever, that Institute Road.
Yes.
I think that that that's supposed to be the connection. There was a lot of discussion of that path, not so much evacuation particularly, but um. The kids would go that way instead of out on the street.
I remember that we had for when we did approve that. I remember that we had for, when we did approve that, it, there was, there's some condition or part in the plan that was. This is where a connection will be if a connect, if a path is ever made.
And anyway, you might, you might, i- if you haven't seen that, that there, there was a, you know, a reference to. So, a discussion about having a connection, um, and, um, and how it would work. Uh, in, in those decisions, we had one of our members who was very interested in it.
Yes.
Um, okay.
I do have one question that it might be an Evan question and not a Fiona question, but the, I remember hearing that. The UPS facility that was granted a TIF at town meeting several years back, that's on the Shrewsbury Grafton Line, kind of. Over two parcels, is looking to make headway on that project again. Does, do you know if the TIF that we approved will take place at first like z- year zero of the. Of the TIF process, or does that, or has that years been counting away since we passed it? Do you know that? If, I, probably an Evan question.
Yeah, I don't, I, 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 I think it starts at zero, I'm pretty sure, but I would just double check with the TA's office. Um, is Evan handles the TIF committee and um, Ray Mead is also on, is on the TIF committee and on the select board, um, so. Ray or Evan would probably be the better.
Okay, yeah, I got a few questions, but I did, I didn't reach out to anyone yet to, to find out, but I figured I'd ask you if you know.
Yeah, and, and that, you know, while we're talking about it, um. Yeah, that's just something on, that also should be on the board's radar, that's coming up another, you know, we're bigger um, scale. Projects that we'll, we'll be looking at, so.
Okay. Are there any reports from planning board representatives? Oh, uh, any, anything about the correspondence? The, the, the legal document we don't need to worry about?
I don't believe so, I, I.
That one.
I haven't been able to um, get a, an opinion from council, I know that they have been extremely busy with other matters. Um, so that's understandable, but yeah, I, I haven't been able to get a consensus on how to, you know. Start the process for reclaiming the bond or, or anything, so I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm still waiting, I've been following up and I haven't heard anything. Um, this is just, I just wanna keep the board in the loop with the paperwork that the town is receiving. This is also on file at the treasure collector's office, um. This is just, this is really more of a matter between the private parties, the Russo Brothers and the developer, um. The, you know, the Russo Brothers did do a good portion of the work and they're trying to get paid for that. Um, obviously, the, the developer doesn't have any money to pay anybody, but um, that's where we're at. Um, so just trying to be as transparent as possible and I'll continue to follow up and see what we can do.
I, I'm a little concerned about the, not being able to get input from council. Um, it seems to me like I may have heard that more than once, um, when, you might. Wanna let Evan know that there's at least a little concern.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I will do that.
Okay, uh, are we ready to say reports from planning board representatives on town committees and CMRPC? Do we have any?
My only comment was relating to the, the thing about the, um, that parcel I talked about, we talked about earlier, the letter.
Yeah, nothing. In that, in that case, is there any, anything else which may lawfully come before us?
Move, will you turn?
Second.
Moved in second, that's not debatable. Roll call.
Mr. Davidson.
Davidson, aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Vega Trammann.
Vega Trammann, aye.
And Mr. Hassner.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned.